A council for budget purposes. And the next item on the agenda is presentation from staff regarding the 2021 draft budget. So, Mr. Back, I'll turn it over to you.
Thank you, your worship.
There we go. Thank you, your worship, again. This is an update more than a presentation as we continue from our previous journey. As you may recall, I can't, I can't even recall whether it was October or November, but we know the presentation started in December. And this is a continuation of the form that we've been using since then that we understand will seek to have revisited, but it was an attempt by all parties involved to attempt to streamline the process and focus on the core issues as we view this as being effectively to hold the line budget with some variances due to the COVID situation. So, again, our focus here is to pick up from our last meeting. And our objective, I guess, is to try to result in some numbers that are going to be satisfactory or at least to advance or progress to some numbers in terms of revenue enhancement that are going to be satisfactory. As we begin as a general statement, we, we probably should bring the slides up now. Sandra, are you out there? I see Sam and Sandra, I see you're out there, too. Sandra, can you get ready with the slides? Maybe not just yet, but just make sure you guys are working on it. Where we're at then with the, the process that we've undertaken today is trying to continue to squeeze and wring out of whatever savings we can. As you may recall, when we did our first projections, we actually produced the overhang from 2020. And one of the slides we'll show here today has tried to condense that down. The original overhang was something like 7.94% because of service enhancements and deferments and whatnot, which was certainly a wise, wise move at that time. It just became very complicated because of the COVID environment. As we advanced through some of those numbers, we've advanced and we have, as was previously raised, taken advantage of the restart grant. As was mentioned before, we haven't actually utilized restart grant in 2020. We're using it in 2021. And in so doing, we think we're using it for the purpose for which it was intended to bridge the gap, to try to keep our operations at a similar level. As you may recall, we originally had about four, four and a half percent, I think, was built in for loss of revenue and increased expenses. The 5.4% covered that, and we continue to use it to cover that going forward. But as was referenced, that does include a bit of a challenge going, going forward for us because it means that we have to make that up next year. But the difference is next year, hopefully, we're getting to return to an environment where the, where the numbers are, are more, I guess, stable and we can actually see some holding of the line on expenses and increase in revenues. So, as we turn to the first slide that's here now, slide you've seen before, but it's been readjusted based on some assumptions you're going to see in a subsequent slide. This does show the, the, the nondiscretionary and others totaling. Again, this is in part based on the hangover from previous 6.54, but then we had to increase that to allow for either additional expenses in the rec centers or loss of revenue in the recreation centers. That's the number that's been referred to as being rather large. Again, what are our options with those? Can we reduce the 6.54? Well, certainly, we can, we can try, but that's reducing nondiscretionary items, which includes some of the things that have been previously added by council and were important to council, but we can revisit that at a later date because there certainly is flexibility once we get into the adjustment of the service levels themselves. Again, we reforecast growth to allow for a bit more growth. We increased some deferments and reductions. We utilize the restart grant. So, at this point, we're balancing to 3.79%. Again, it's a balancing and still premature to, to call that a recommendation. And we say premature because if we look to our neighbors, most of our neighbors are experiencing rates higher than that. And we like to pick on Suri. So, we look at Suri, it's coming in about 3%, but they've added to their program a couple of levies or a levy system that will take them from $100 per parcel to $300 per parcel. So, when you factor that in, it's significantly higher. In any event, as we, as we go forward, we, we can actually look at that in our next slide, which is some of the options we looked at. And these, again, are based on discussions, and this may not be a completely accurate interpretation, but the discussions include, well, should we use levies? Well, from our previous discussions, there didn't seem to be a lot of support for utilization of levies, so we, we have left that off the table. Now, I should, should pause there for a moment. When I say levies, we certainly have existing levies in many categories. And of course, one of them is the library, for example. We're not removing that in any way, shape or form. Again, we're simply trying to make that levy encompass all the costs we have associated with libraries as we deal with our utilities and other sorts of programs. But the message we've heard to date is no new levies, no infrastructure levies, no, no specific levies that are going to try to deal with the infrastructure deficit that may exist. We instead don't think this is the appropriate time. We look at deferrals. As we did in 2020, we looked at deferrals and can we defer any expenses which came along? One of the discussions here will also be a deferral. We'll see that in the next slide. The deferral is by half of a year, so that is one way of trying to bridge the gap a little bit. Reallocations is another topic. Can we reallocate from any of the, the projects or programs? Can they be moved around? Can we reassign the carryforwards? And that work continues. Can we do anything of that nature for projects that have not yet started? What options do we actually have with those? The biggest one is still the reductions and could any program be eliminated? And, and, and what would the implications of that be? And likewise, what about our contribution to capital as was referenced? We're still maintaining our contribution to capital at just about the 2019, 2020 level. As the longtime council members will recall, our objective was to increase that as we'd done historical studies to show that our contribution to capital for the purposes of maintenance and repairs wasn't sufficient, particularly in, in some of the paving areas. So, we've, we've taken that to heart and have a longer term plan to try to increase that. I think by memory, the need for a stable contribution to capital was somewhere in the neighborhood of 10 to 12 million dollars. We're approximately at $8 million and we fully, well, actually, that's not quite true. We've actually reduced that somewhat. We're, I think, more like about 7.5 if we take into account the balancing entry that we put at the back end. And what that means is that we are slowing down the rate of recovery, if you will, but we may have to revisit that as well. We look at capital as being one of those very challenging issues because it's one of those things where if you defer your maintenance long enough, you can no longer repair, you must replace. And that's one of the, the things that concern staff the most is making sure we've got adequate contributions to capital, so we're reluctant to see them to be diminished, but also understand in some very difficult and difficult environments, there aren't a lot of other options. We also have then the reserves and surpluses. Those are, again, balancing amounts, small amounts are certainly achievable, but larger amounts is not, not recommended. We're getting below our policy thresholds for, for limits. And our, our, our reserves and balances are probably less than we'd like to see them add and probably less than they are to many of our neighbors in the region. But over time, you, you build those up. It's not a, a one-year increase. As we go forward, then, we talked briefly about strategic borrowing. Again, for certain projects, it does work, but we don't think, again, we're hearing, and it's an assumption, and there can be discussion of that today or to later date, whether we can or should engage in strategic borrowings for smaller projects, again, for marquee or projects of significant community interest. Work at maybe an example or a, we have no plans for one, but a, a new 50-meter pool or something of that nature where there's matching government grants, those sorts of things. Those are things where we think there could be some bonuses to, to considering it. And then finally, we have the differential mill rate adjustments. We, we talked about that last year a little bit. We've compared ourselves to some of our neighbors and our mill rates are, I guess, somewhat favorable. That means that our, our tax rates for both residential and commercial are generally a little bit lower in some cases. There's always exceptions to that, but when we look at the, you're trying to use differential mill rates to say, charge more for business or industry or even charge more for residential. We've, we've heard the comments that that really wasn't a place where council wanted to go, so we've effectively taken that off the, the table as well. So, as we then advance to the, the next slide, again, this is a bit abbreviated because we've tried to balance from our previous slides. What have we done? Well, we've made sure that the library levy encompasses all library expenses. I think there was a suggestion that said, well, maybe we just keep raising the library levy until we, we reach the, the deficit that we have. And of course, we know that was just in jest because we're not, not saying that. We simply want to make sure it's transparent and covers all of our costs and, and to do so provides a good foundation for, from which to go forward. We've talked about looking at our, our service levels again historically in terms of this is our recreation culture and parks and the facilities. We've reduced the, the service level, I guess, the, the deficiency of the service level from 2.34 to 1.75. And we've moved the, the, the extra, extra expenses from 2.68 to 2.35. And as we said, these are not hard and fast forecasts based on detailed, I guess, statistical analysis. This is regional estimates that we've, we've talked about and we're being a bit, I guess, aggressive and optimistic, I guess, in terms of some of the numbers. But again, these are numbers that will recover over time as the COVID problem goes away. What they'll recover for this year, of course, is always a bit of a challenge. Let's see, we also then took the growth rate. We originally had forecast that one at 1.53. We're now forecasting it at 1.7, so that, that's giving us a bit more of a boost. That's part of our, our, our challenge, I guess, in terms of trying to figure out in this COVID environment, trying to figure out exactly what, what our growth rate will come in at. At 1.7, we're in a similar range to what we have been in non-COVID years, maybe a little bit lower than we've been. We've, we've tried to experiment at the 2% range and the, the, we'll say the two and a quarter percent range in terms of growth, and we've never actually been able to maintain that. So, we've built in a bit of a reduction, but maybe not as much as we thought at the first instance. And then probably one of the more interesting sections is based on our discussions is, well, what about other deferments, reductions and use of surplus? What can we do in, in these categories? So, again, last time we talked, we, we had these, the provision for staff to support the, staff to support the tree by law that's coming forth. Well, we heard in that discussion that it was important to maintain that, so we put that back in. But when you see where it says defer staff for six months, we've actually said we would start that, that program in about mid-year as opposed to at the start of the year. So, that's given us a little bit. We've actually removed not one, but all three RCMP officers for this year. Again, we've had the ten and order last year. We've, we could still look at trying to reduce those if we so chose, but we said, well, let's let them all arrive as they arrive, but let's not requisition anymore for this year. And as a reminder, if we requisitioned 10 in 2020 and three in 2021, that would give us a total of 13. So, we're saying, well, given the COVID year and given the fact of the difficulty in training and timing and the uncertainty of the Suri detachment, what's going to be taking place there? Let's, let's instead go to the, let's put them off for a year and then see what happens. And that gives us the, the net savings you see. As you may recall, we were using the RCMP surplus to balance some of those off, so when we take the expenses out, we have to put the revenues back in that we're using from surplus. So, it's, it's, it's something that helps us actually balance. Now, the next line's an interesting one because we have always heard that we run the detachment. We never have the number of officers that we budget for through leaves and medical issues and holidays and whatnot. It's, it's never possible to really achieve full complement. So, what we're saying is we're effectively going to budget for less than full complement. We are instead going to budget for the fact that we're going to allow some to go to the reserve, the, the surplus that we have that goes to the reserve, but we're going to reduce the overall surplus by using that to plug it back into operations. And the result, the result of that is we've been able to, I guess, put together what we feel comfortable is another $200,000 saving. It's not in accordance with best accounting practices, but it's something that we feel historically we can justify because we've never been, actually been anywhere near the full complement. And we think in so, and so doing, we can still be pretty comfortable that we'll have enough revenue to cover the, the, the cost of the detachment. Let's see. We also then come to the paving increases was mentioned. We have a policy document history that says we should be increasing our allocation towards paving at to about $500,000 a year. We've cut that down to $250,000, so that's not the total amount. That is simply the amount we're going to increase it by. And, and that remains the amount that we, we think is still comfortable again because of the, the COVID environment and some of the slowdown in the, in the, I guess, damage being done to the roads as there has been, there was, I guess, there's not anymore, but there was some lower traffic numbers that we were seeing. The CPO lease is something we've actually, again, that's not really a reduction per se. It's more of a refinement. We've been able to refine that based on the information we had. So, it's, it's been able to take into account the gross and triple net cost, but it provides us with that. And then we have the increase in building permit revenue. Another question arose as to that, well, couldn't we just predict it's going to be more? We can always predict, but this is a number that we think we can, we can actually probably attain as opposed to possibly obtain. As we look at the numbers and the history of building permits, we think in 2021, it will still be a robust year for building permits. There's been good, some good activity so far today. The challenge is going to be in 2022, so we're looking at this increase in building permit revenue as being for the year with a mindful eye to watching it for the balance of 2022. Because if there is to be a slowdown that we think it'll be occurring at that point, it's still very, very busy and some of the numbers we're actually seeing. And then, as I mentioned, we've used surplus to, to fund the contribution to capital to maintain it or the other option would be to, to delete that, to reduce our contribution to capital to, to come up with a number that represents the, the balancing number we've said. So, again, this, this shows the changes from the previous slide and that's why we're at the 3.79. Now, there were some suggestions or questions raised about historically in terms of, well, how come the number was so high, the 6.74? What was that all about? And I think the next slide is, is a high-level summary. So, it's a high-level summary of some of the changes or expenses we're seeing this year. They don't add up exactly. We don't intend them to. We've tried to provide you with a synopsis of what they, what they were in the previous plan, what the other changes were in 2021. These are the, some of the, the, I guess, the changes from what was the plan and then our annual changes that occurred in 2021. And that then leaves us at the, the 3.79 is our work in progress, but remember, we're not requisitioning any, any new additional RCMP officers then in 2021. We would delay that till 2022 and have a bit of a catch-up. Now, the, the, the challenge with all this is it's a bit of a moving target. As we get better and stronger financial data, we see that there is a, we're pretty close on some of them. You'll be getting a memo out, I think, if you haven't got it already, from Recreation Culture and Parks that shows that we're marginally better in terms of some of our revenues and expenses, but only to the extent of about $50,000 or something. So, we've got a long way to go, but we're on the, the right track in terms of that. And we, we think that we can be optimistic in terms of what, what the recovery will begin to look like. Again, this does not take into account any of our, any of our, you know, priorities. Those are still a work in progress. And the budget will have to be modified to allow some, some envelopes to permit funding of these, provided we get funding from third parties, whether it be from federal grants, provincial grants, or from, if we chose to borrow, we'll have envelopes that can permit those, but they're what we call unfunded envelopes. So, we don't have the funding for them yet as we struggle with a way to try to find out for the funding. So, again, I guess I would just close by saying that we've used, that we have used the COVID relief money, I think, as it was intended to, to bridge the gap, particularly in the recreation culture and parks area, to allow there to be a return to some level of service. But we're prefacing that by saying we need the flexibility to continue to have a business case for the hours effectively that we're open or not. And we'd like to see that analysis continue to expand throughout. But we're mindful that council's the first ones to hear about the, the policy impact, the, the policy changes. And when, when people are seeing a variation from what they're used to or from their service levels, you're to hear about it first. So, we're, we're looking to try to get to that right blend, which of course is always a bit of a challenge. With that, I'll ask Sandra and Sam if they have any questions before we open it up for questions from council about this latest iteration, and then we can talk about the, the next steps following the, the questions and answers. Sandra, Sam, no one out there?
Sorry, unmuted. We will take any questions.
Thank you very much, Mr. Back, for that presentation. And without stopping to get a glass of water, that was admirable. I'll now put it council for any questions and staff regarding this. So, just to be clear, this is the, this is the presentation for today. There's no more slides? Or is there no more slides?
There's none planned, your worship. We've got some of the older slides from our previous presentations. We can maybe flip to those if there was questions. What we see is happening, and again, this is not quite optimal. We were intending on proceeding on the 25th with another, I guess, more detailed presentation to advance, assuming we achieved our priorities for today. But without that, we, we're going to have to reassess in terms of what we can actually get done until we complete that priority session. But then we also are mindful that we only have a limited time within which to get a budget, so we, we've got to assess that. And that'll be, take something we'll have to assess over the next few days in terms of what we do on the 25th and when we can have that final, final work with Dr. McIntosh to, to try to bring this, this home.
Well, thank you for that. Hey, I'm with council on and council president, council on.
Yeah, thank you. I guess, hopefully, we'll get a copy of this. That would be helpful because there was something on the previous slide that I, that I wanted to reference. But I, I had a question, though, about, because Mr. Back, and you touched on the difference between commercial, industrial and residential. We did do some adjustments to that last budget. Where do we stand now? Were they, was it rolled back or did we stay with the ratio we had last budget? Or, and if we can know what those, what the ratio is and how do we? You mentioned in your presentation that we seem to fare well, but I wonder if we could see a graph about that? Do we fare well in terms of what businesses, industrial are paying and residential?
So, just to recap, then, the last budget, we, we had the suggestion that perhaps one segment could pay a greater proportion of our overall, I guess, revenue gathering. And what council determined at that point was it wasn't prudent to do so. This was before COVID. We instead kept the historical balances. The historical balances tend to favor industry slightly, and that's positive, but, but the residential is very competitive. In fact, when we look at some of our neighbors, there's been a greater expanse on the residential. We're again, holding the line. And yes, I think we could probably provide some sort of information. I know, I think we've done it historically, so we could dig it out again and compare some of the mill rates because, of course, it's the mill rates that lead to the tax rates and it's the tax rates that then determine what your revenues are going to be and so you can cover your projected expenses that we determine through the budget process.
Yeah, I'd appreciate that, your worship and Mr. Back. And we've always had these comparators, which just helps us to feel, you know, that we're in the, you know, in the right zone, let's say. So, that would be helpful to see how we are comparing with others with information that may or may not be available now. So, just to recap, then, you're saying we did not change the ratio between commercial, industrial and residential that was proposed, so we're, we're status quo with that currently?
That's my recollection that we considered a change, but it was not preceded with, so we stayed at our, whatever our previous formulas were.
Do we, do we know offhand what that is or are you going to send that to us?
We'll have to send that to you because I'd be at this point to go by my memory and it's highly faulty.
Yep. Thank, yeah, thank you very much.
Thank you. Council Ferguson.
Yeah, I think that's also, while we're still on that, I think that's important to look at that because I know that other jurisdictions are indeed looking at that. I wanted to refer to, I guess, call it page one, it's right there now. Previously, you've gone from nondiscretionary from 6.71 to 6.54, which is good. And, but you, on your deferments and reduction, you went from 1.03 to 1.21, that's an in, an increase, I guess, of more reduction? If I made you, did you want to comment on that increase in deferment and reductions?
You're, you're, you're quite right. What, there's two, two roots to it. The first root is as we complete the, the calendar year end, our numbers begin to firm up. They don't totally firm up until we actually complete the, the fiscal year end. Now, it's the same time, but it takes a number of months. Usually it would be, oh, about March before you'd actually have your final numbers in because of the procurement process and the late bills coming in and going through it with the auditors and having all that complete. So, it's through that process, I think, the, the better numbers you would see the nondiscretionary having a slight reduction to the deferments and reductions, the 1.21. If we can go to the next slide, go to the next slide, maybe it's a slide after that one, sorry, the next one, there we go. I think it was note number five, and you'll see that deferment, reductions and surplus. That corresponds to that note. So, when you see the change on the first page, here's how the change has been arrived at. Again, no RCMP, no new RCMP for 2021, other than the 10 that are in the system now. Again, we're recognizing that the RCMP budget is never been able to operate at a full complement. We also know that when we don't operate at a full complement, the surplus that we have goes to a fund to replace RCMP infrastructure. And what we're saying, well, what we'll do is we'll take some of the money, I should pause there for a moment. Some of the money goes, half the money goes to a fund to replace RCMP infrastructure. The rest falls to our general surplus. We're taking the amount from our general surplus and saying, well, let's reinvest that or, if you will, at source deducta. So, we're coming up with a bit of a saving there. We're reducing our, yep.
Okay, and that helps me out, too, because your reduction, I've been looking at again, the, the last week, which is January 11th, the reduction from two to three and from 24,000 to 72.7202082, which is in, in your page three, your new information. So, that's because of the, the three reserves instead of two reserve.
So, we go from, we predicted originally three, we went to two, now we're at zero. Now, we're going further with the RCMP and saying, well, no matter what the number is, we've never operated at 100%. So, we're building in a number that we're going to operate at less than. And I gotta, you'll be careful here because I'll get Sandra all excited. We can't really budget for less than what our expenses are, but we can budget what we think the surplus is going to be. So, again, we're budgeting a surplus we haven't yet achieved to bring down our overall expenses. It's a workaround that does actually work.
Yeah, I just wanted to point that out, that I noticed that it was a, a big jump from the 24,000 to 72,000. Other than that, it's, you guys have done a good job and I appreciate you going over it for us. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Counsel Coon.
You did perhaps?
Counsel Coon, are you muted?
Sorry, sorry there.
I go.
Yeah, thank you for these numbers. I wanted, wanted to just talk about the RCMP and, and I'd like to actually hear from other members of council on how they feel about not having any new RCMP unless I'm not understanding it correctly, especially because like right now, we, as probably have seen in the news, the seems to be a gang war raging in our neighboring communities, which has included Langley as well. And how, you know, I mean, I, I, I feel like while we want to, we want to get to a, a really good number here with our budget, you know, I don't want to jeopardize the safety of our communities, especially, you know, right now. And I don't know, I'd like to hear from other members of council what they're comfortable with. Thank you.
Counsel Ritter.
Yes, thank you. I wonder if we could go back to that first page, please? Okay, so if I'm reading this correctly, the 5.47%, which is the grant, plus the 3.79%. If we added those two together, what we're really looking at is a 9.26% increase in this budget now?
Without the 5.74, we'd have to actually look at redeploying funds or, or doing something else. So, it's, the total revenue need would be 5.47, but that would not necessarily be the tax increase. And the reason for that is in part the operation of the facilities and centers at, with reduced people and the same staffing level. That adds to us about 4% that we're, we're absorbing at this point. And as well, part of it is the carryover from the last year, which was our, our last slide, but we also had one previously that showed it about 7%. So, we opened the year with deferments and reallocations from 2020 of about 7, 7 and a half percent.
So, what exactly is this restart grant funding?
It's a, a amount provided by the province to maintain your service levels. So, it covers well for the fact that we've opened our centers, but we also are maintaining our service levels elsewhere, so we don't need to spend it on the rec centers, but of course we are. And it's a one-time that we'll have to make up. I, I guess, as we look at it, if the rec centers were operating at full capacity, you would, without the COVID issue, we would be able to delete the 1.75 and here the 2.35. And then we could operate as, as normal times would permit. Right now, we don't know at the end of next year what it's going to look like. I think you're, you're wise to be cautioning, well, could that number be smaller as we bounce back? Yes, but we do know that the deferral we're talking about here in this circumstance at 5.47 is, is less than the one we started with last year at about 7, 7.94, 7.74? nine four, seven point seven four. So we're that we're we're flattening that out as we go forward.
Okay, so the one point seven five plus the two point three five, I'm coming up with four point something. So we actually, uh, yeah, but we're getting five point four seven. So there's one point three seven out of that five point four seven. What are we spending that on?
Um, well, we I guess you can look at it two ways. We could be looking at it for some of the services in twenty twenty one. Or we could be looking at the services that we had uh in uh twenty twenty that we had to annualize and pay for. So uh, the easiest illustration, because there was a number of them, was while we hired ten police officers in twenty twenty, we didn't budget for ten police officers in twenty twenty. We budgeted for ten police officers for three months. Uh, so if you you take that as being a quarter, uh, effectively what we we started to do is we we said, uh, we really budgeted for, I guess, what's a quarter, two and a half police officers. And we said the other seven and a half police officers we'd pay for in twenty uh twenty one. Uh, so I guess that's probably the easiest one, but to be fair, that's picking a little bit on the on the that number. There was other numbers too in terms of other other changes that we uh put through and uh use of surplus and deferments that we utilize to to bring the numbers down.
Okay, now earlier when we were having our uh discussion on the pools, it wasn't in this meeting, it was in the previous one. You said with the three open pools, they're at ninety five percent occupancy each each of them, but they're bringing in such reduced levels of revenue that they're really only operating at nine percent, nine to ten percent?
Oh, great question and and very close. So the challenge is, uh, if you see the memo, you may see that we're operating, it will say ninety five percent of capacity. Uh, while the capacity is not the capacity uh of yesterday year, it's a capacity, COVID capacity. So when I think the best number I I heard was something like this, and I think it's outlined in the memo, uh, they could the food, the pool may have a capacity of four hundred people. But because of COVID and uh social distancing and other requirements, you may be able to put only forty people in. Uh, that may be maybe sixty, but I'll use the numbers. It's easier to balance. So right then, uh, we're at uh ten percent of our previous capacity. But with the numbers we're experiencing as to that ten percent, we're at ninety five percent of the ten percent. So put it in real numbers. And if we were at four hundred, uh, we're we've got a total capacity now of forty. And we're now looking at a capacity of maybe we're getting about thirty eight to thirty nine people. Uh, I guess it'd be thirty seven to thirty eight people in those openings. So while we're getting robust use of the openings we have, we uh don't have the ability to uh to put more people in the pool. The the problem we face is that uh when we help operating from health and safety concerns, our number of staff in place uh for pool operations only, because the rest the rest of the center is impacted because it's very limited in what's going on, uh, it's running at what it would have been before. So we've got, we've got the staffing level that could accommodate in the illustration uh the four hundred, but uh only having about forty people in place. So it's the the challenge of of why the rec centers are challenged. Certainly, they certainly need to open, but they uh they are certainly a challenge for us because of the economics.
So we said we would revisit this in the budget process, which we're in right now. Does it make sense to have three open pools? Or should we go back to two? I don't care which two, but we should maybe cut it back from three to two.
Uh, again, that's becoming a a policy decision. Our our first look was to see which of the how the pools were operating in the context of the usage in terms of how many were from the township and how many were from outside. Uh, we're seeing that I think I'm going to get my memory, what seventy to eighty percent were actually township residents. And the non township residents predominantly, not exclusively, but predominantly were, I think, city residents. So we're seeing the the usage jump up there a little bit. Um, uh, but as to the numbers, uh, the numbers are, I guess, are are fairly again, with these limited numbers, the, you know, the number of people, they they were getting good usage on those numbers, but I think your point is, well, that would mean our cost per user subsidy is gonna be incredibly high for a period of time. And it's true, it will be because, of course, we've got all the expenses for a much larger gathering and the and only very limited revenue.
Okay, and which pool is it that's attracting the city residents? Is it the Langley City Pool or the or the Blair Pool or is it all three of them?
Yeah, it's Blair and Walnut Grove, interestingly enough. Um, as I'm going by my recollection, Walnut Grove was getting some good traction. And I think it's just because it's a bit of a different facility and and it just became a more popular destination. We expect the numbers to revert back down to being a greater usage at Blair because Blair is, of course, much closer to the the city residents.
Yeah, well, um, in that six point five four percent, the non discretionary and other, are there new or replacement positions included in that number?
Uh, we have no new positions or service enhancements this year, other than those mandated by by council. Uh, so or so I rephrase that, either mandated, uh, there's none mandated or coming from staff this year. There was a number of requests that were rejected. Last year in twenty twenty, there were some service enhancements that uh council authorized that went through that are being annualized. Uh, but in terms of new positions, other than those that have been the tree by the tree uh by law support people, uh, we don't have any uh new positions per se, which is a a bit of a consternation of some of the staff because there's some some various areas, significant areas of need that we're just not addressing at this point.
So we're not picking up the police officers. You've made that clear in the next slide. What if we put a freeze on all hirings, like replacement, new, whatever, just frozen for the next year? How would that in fact impact the budget?
Um, well, i- it's an interesting one because as you're saying that, I'm thinking we still have about twenty four to twenty five QP positions to recall that are on layoff. Um, they are in layoffs, so we would be um uh, those would be the ones I think that are primarily affected. Uh, we have no new hirings. We have only, I guess, replacements for some people retiring or people that are moving on. Uh, it would depend then upon the skill sets they have in terms of what that would uh provide for. Um, the challenge would be some of the areas do pay for themselves uh in terms of their revenue. So um plan checkers and and permits and licensing are very busy and I'm I'm, these are rough numbers, but I think they they effectively pay for themselves. So a reduction there isn't going to help. In fact, it's gonna simply serve as slow service delivery and perhaps cost us revenue. Uh, whereas there are other areas that are purely, um, I guess purely um uh looking at being paid for from general revenue. Uh, some of the parks positions, uh, some of some other positions of that nature, just using those as an example. Uh, it would effectively mean uh if people were leaving their positions, that there would be a a reduction, I think, in service levels. Keep in mind that uh that as we operate, uh, where we can, we try to run without the position for a number of months, two or three months to see what uh what the result is. And then we then will authorize the replacement when someone's retiring or leaving. Not so much with the specialized positions, but some of the more general positions. And what we're hearing again is back to numbers we've heard before is that we are understaffed in many of the areas and that the workloads of many of the staff is is not sustainable. Um, but I think everyone understands in the COVID environment that it's just not a time to be trying to expand.
Yeah, well, I think um people who are working from home are probably working just as hard as they did in a workplace, that's for sure. Um, do we have an inventory or a list of some sort of comprehensive list of the number of vacant positions right now that we wouldn't necessarily have to fill for this year?
Well, we would have a uh at any given moment, we'd have a snapshot of positions that are vacant. Um, that would require a further assessment uh in terms of whether we have to fill them or not, what that criteria would look like. Uh, so I think that's something I'd have to take away and go and talk to HR about to see what they can show in terms of the numbers. Um, but remember, I guess where we would start with that is we would probably begin by saying, again, uh, the easy answer is if we uh took our ten police officers from last year and simply said, well, let's do five this year and five next year. That brings us much more closer to the balance itself because those are getting new arriving positions now. I say that only in part because we're still having difficulty determining when the uh the the positions will fully arrive. One of our challenges right now is that the the RCMP are in a bit of a state of um uh change. As we know, the superintendent has been reassigned and we're looking for him to return or the replacement. But also the chief superintendent that uh was looking after things has also begun the process to move on to another position. Uh, so there's some gaps in the RCMP at this point that we're working with them, attempting to try to get better numbers or senses and to answer the very simple question, okay, well, of the ten requisition that in theory should have arrived by October, when will they all be here? And right now, our estimate, I think, is we've got maybe four or five here at the moment.
Yeah, well, I'm still looking at that five point four seven. I mean, it's nice to have it. It's nice to be able to use it, but I'm really concerned about having to replace that next year. Uh, because right away, we're looking at a five point four seven percent tax increase next year. And that's what I'd like to try to avoid. Anyway, those are my thoughts. Thank you very much for your presentation today.
Sandra, I think this might be the time, if we can look at not your summary slide of the changes, but the one we showed earlier that showed, I think it was seven point uh some numbers. It's a it's a good one that we can uh re-recirculate. I think, you know, we we talked about that one. Uh, that's the summary, but there was one from a previous presentation. Did we happen to bring that along? It's because it's a good refresher for everyone if we if we do have it here. Are you out there looking, Sandra? You're muted, so we can't uh tell if you've just left the building.
Perhaps while she's getting that, we can go to counsel Whitmarsh. Oh, he's back. Okay, there she is.
Here we go. Now, I don't have my glasses on, but this, I think, was from our presentation back in December. And without getting into all the juicy details, uh, where did it go here? Sandra, if you can, oh, there it is. I think it's seven point one four. Uh, I think that's what the change is totaled. We only show you that the two twenty one budget estimated in twenty twenty. So as we completed the budget year in twenty uh, so it would have been, what time would that have been? In the fall of two thousand nineteen and the spring of two thousand twenty, when we concluded that budget process, we at that point knew, starting the the day of the twenty twenty budget, we had to find additional revenue of seven point uh one four percent. I'm not sure what that is. So uh, the actual total amount, I think, which uh Sandra's trying to show us was, oh, there it is. Thank you, was actually the base budget increase then was nine point nine four, but we anticipated growth of two percent. So that gave us a seven point nine four starting number. So we started twenty twenty knowing that we had to expand our revenue by seven point nine four, which um was not uh all that likely in the best of circumstances, but certainly worthy of consideration because of the service enhancements. So we started that year. The difference is, I suppose, is this year then, uh, if we do a comparison, we're looking at something more like five point whatever it would be, that money, that's all that's actually missing. So so there's a number of numbers that balance and bring it back, but it just shows that with time, we can uh bring some of the numbers back into balance with some comfort. Uh, but it's uh never actually easy. So I I think, Your Worship, you were going to counsel Whitmarsh.
After that, uh, counsel Whitmarsh.
Yeah, I guess uh two things is uh that one is um based on how I'm understanding it, and if I'm incorrect, maybe staff could correct me, but uh, the five point four seven uh would not be the tax increase uh necessitated for next year because of over four percent of that would be um probably uh returned back by uh better recreation facility operations and more revenue coming in as we uh suggest that maybe by next January, we're somewhat back to normal or close to. So it it isn't really a five point four seven. It might be a gap of a one and a half percent gap, uh, which is still a gap, but um maybe not as big as five point four seven. Uh, the second thing that I and I had a question on, uh, again, in my understanding, when I think of the RCMP and uh counsel Coon's, you know, made a good point about uh RCMP in our community, but my understanding of of the way that you've structured is that we we typically build into the budget what it's gonna cost us to hire the RCMP. But because they don't all come at the same time, they come at different stages, uh, some don't actually make it that year. They they end up coming in the following year. Um, we end up uh budgeting for it, but then end up having a surplus. And what it seems that you're doing here is sort of removing the surplus and taking a very realistic approach of how much we'll actually spend in RCMP. And if that's true, then we're not actually reducing the number of RCMP. We're just reducing in the budget the ex- the surplus that we would normally um have in a given year because of the timing of RCMP hires. Is that is that a correct um uh view of it um through Your Worship to uh maybe Mr. Backton?
Thank you, Your Worship. Um, you're very, very close. Um, there's two parts to your question. I guess the first part is if we could snap our fingers and come back to uh as if there had been no COVID, uh, what would the difference be in the numbers then? And you're quite right. Right now, we're at four point oh five and the grant is five point four seven. So uh, what is that? Uh, one point four two would be our gap. Uh, so that would be the gap in a in a perfect world, all but for the fact of the the COVID. Uh, we have to be a bit cautious on that gap because, well, I don't think we'll be able to achieve all those numbers, but it's a I guess our point was with the leveling, it's in a better position than we were in twenty twenty. And again, in twenty twenty, we really anticipated growth would continue and the world was looking very bright and we had uh a lot of the, you know, booming, uh, I guess, in all facets of the organization. So it was a uh certainly understandable that we would uh make that uh that assumption going forward, that we could sort of maintain or build off of that. And uh, that's the COVID world. Uh, to your second part then, in in terms of the RCMP, you're 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 conceptually correct, but process, it's a little different. And and what we're saying here is that we've looked at the overall budget, we of the RCMP. We know we can't say, well, uh, we, you know, on a true costing method, it's a hundred dollars. We're only gonna put ninety five dollars to it. Uh, that gets all sorts of problems in in general approval in um in the audit world and in the accounting world. So we must do the hundred dollars. Uh, but what we can say is, well, we know we're going to run uh really at a uh surplus, we're really only gonna spend ninety of that hundred. And we know of that uh ten dollar difference, five goes to the reserve account that we use. Uh, so and then five falls to surplus. And what we're saying is, in in our example, well, let's take two dollars of that, uh, whether it's one and one or two and from one group or the other, and we'll simply al- already apply that back. Uh, so the result is, you're right, we are then simply substantively uh recognizing we're not gonna be at a full complement. So let's, you know, uh, let's go for getting matching revenue to lower number. But we're achieving that by uh by reducing our contribution then to the surplus that we're projecting based on historical averages. And for interest sake, we we tend to run about, I think it was ninety three percent. Uh, we tend to run at ninety three percent of the compliment over over a five year average. Uh, it spikes and it valleys, but uh, we can use that number with some level of safety.
Right, okay. So for so we're not actually reducing the number of police officers that we're uh hiring into Langley. We're we're using an a an accounting adjustment for how we cover the cost of those police officers.
And and that's correct. For those, we're doing an accounting adjustment to cover the costs. The other factor, though, and I think you you're aware and glossed over it there quickly, was that we're reducing our rate of increase. Ordinarily, we'd be increased at, say, three officers per year. While we're saying, because we did ten last year, we'll do zero this year and then come back and assess it in two thousand and twenty uh two. And in part, that's because we uh we look to um to have more discussions with the senior uh level of the RCMP. And of course, that's in flux right now because of the reassignment and the the moving on of the chief superintendent. So it's really a tough year to try to pinpoint some of the more specific information we need to figure out uh what the processes are gonna look like. So uh, we're we're hedging our bet a little bit on that and saying that uh if there was a time to do it now, it's certainly that time, given our commitment of last year.
Okay, thank you.
Uh, counsel Whitmarsh.
Yeah, I'm gonna follow up on that. I appreciate uh counsel Whitmarsh's questions there. That makes a lot of sense to to get that all clarified. I'm gonna sort of throw out the issue here that we, you know, we're adding a significant number of residents to the community every year. And, you know, a lot of effort and discussion went into adding, you know, ten RCMP officers. I remember meetings with superintendent power in regards to the need, you know, being somewhere around fifteen. And we, you know, finding out in this this year's budget that our authorized strength went up a lot in last budget. But actual strength went down by one RCMP officer. I must admit, that's pretty frustrating to look at that. So we have you know, significant issues regarding crime and other issues in the community by rising population. Yet how do we solve this problem is a question through staff. If if we continually find officers that we don't get and uh what's the long term solution to this? And more meetings and more discussions are great, but you know, what is the long term solution to this if we just don't get the officers that we want to pay for?
I I think there might be some comfort from the the timing. Remember that we we didn't anticipate that they would arrive prior to Oc- October. In any event, and the the COVID situation happened and hit us uh uh effectively as of March. So that became a major factor. I think in most years, we would have seen um a significant increase in the numbers. Uh, and uh, that's just that that COVID factor, I think, that's probably contributed more. So the challenge in terms of working around it is, and I I do share your your concerns about the endless meetings, is is making sure we're meeting with the right folks, the right people. Uh, when we have a superintendent and chief superintendent in place, it makes it so much simpler. Uh, the the inspectors that are are doing their their the job at the moment are doing yeoman service uh in a very difficult situation. Uh, the, the inspectors that are, are doing their, the, the job at the moment are doing yeoman service, uh, in a very difficult situation. But they're focusing on the, the targets on the ground as opposed to, uh, some of the administrative functions that a superintendent and chief superintendent can actually oversee. The ultimate solution though, I mean, um, is, um, probably getting to a point where we. Actually take our numbers and go more aggressive and go at a hundred and five percent that we attempt to hire to say. Not a hundred percent of our, our target number, but a hundred and five percent of our target number or a hundred and ten percent. So we can end up with a number of officers on the ground that we actually, we, uh, we want to seek. Uh, that's something we've toyed with, but, um, it's difficult to get a handle on. The other component too would be, and this is a, the, the failsafe, I'm not suggesting this at all, but the Surrey model is where, well, if you were to have. Your own detachment or your own, sorry, your own force or your own regional force. Uh, you can sometimes do a bit different in the hiring, because of course they can hire directly off the street as opposed to the RCMP that. Largely are funding from depot, which is new recruits unless they're able to get any, uh, any, um, uh, I guess, transfers that come in from other areas. Which oddly enough may actually occur this, uh, this, uh, season because of the uncertainty in Surrey.
Okay, so I'm going to follow up there if I may, Mr. Mayor, a little bit. So, you know, so the idea then that we're going to remove the officers that would have been the additional this year, I think. Three, you know, if I look at the, I don't have to bring it up, I recall it, um, but others may not. It's, I get the, some of the numbers wrong. But each year roughly, Mr. Backen, we're ten authorized versus actual strength is roughly ten officers? Is that fair? Eight, nine, ten officers on a consistent basis that we are funding? We, we want them and we don't get them, just so I can carry on with my second point when we get back in front.
No, I think in the last five years, that's probably good representation. Uh, the best I've ever seen was, I think, five, and the worst I've seen, I think, again, these are. In terms of the current context, was something like twelve. Uh, but I would think nine, ten is probably a safe assumption.
Okay, so then, you know, it, it might make sense to fund the three, since the likelihood of, of paying for them is, is minimal from what I can gather. I mean, maybe we need to just be a bit more bold here, like you mentioned, Mr. Backen. I'd, I'd like to spend some time thinking about that. I'd like to reserve that. Maybe council can consider that, that rather than removing them for the sake of a, you know, a number in a, in a press article. That we, we look at funding a significant increase again, uh, knowing that, you know, we just, I just want this solved. I don't, I don't want to hear every year about how I fund officers or propose to fund officers, get council to agree to that with some good compromise. And, and then they just don't show up, uh, COVID or not. And, um, you know, given the rate of population increase that, that we're continuing to approve. And have approved, uh, in previous years. And so the solution for that, you know, may be to, uh, significantly increase the quantity again. And Mr. Backen, now this is what I was going to get to, is there a mechanism to not, uh, put that into the tax increase, knowing that we have a sizable RCMP reserve? That if the likelihood that, you know, suddenly we get twelve, or if we authorize, let's just pick a number, we authorize five or ten more. And then we get twelve or thirteen on the ground. Could we not come back in, in any future budget process, any future budget year and withdraw the deficit from the RCMP reserve? Isn't, is, couldn't, rather than have to tax people for RCMP officers who may not get?
Effectively, I think so. I'll, I'll have to get Sandra's comment, because I think what you're saying is, well, let's say, uh, rather than, uh. Zero this year, let's go for funding an additional five, but of those five, let's fully fund them, uh, for, say, this year and perhaps next year. From the RCMP reserve. It, done, that, if done by council resolution, council's varying its own policy and council is the one body that could do that either from. Uh, the fifty percent of the reserves or the surplus, that direction would be, be helpful. Because I think that would, uh, actually work, but I better make sure we check with, uh, the finance guru Sandra. I think that would actually work, because it would simply be a use of surplus, uh, that would be, uh, put in place for the intention of, uh. Again, smoothing out the, 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 the sharp impact over the years. Do you have a comment, Sandra?
Uh, no. We could do that. Um, it's just, again, we're not putting monies away in the reserves then, we're using them and we'll have to, we're essentially deferring the cost. Because we'll have to pick it up in the budget at some point.
Yeah, so I could, I think I could maybe follow up on that. We would essentially have a five, five officer line item, X dollars. RCMP reserve draw X dollars. And then when they don't show up, that'll just default back into the RCMP reserve. But that's something we could. Maybe, maybe a bit simplistically, but is that something we could look at doing?
Yeah, we could run the model and, and show that, uh, consequence to see what it would look like if they did show up or. Or what it would be if we put the, um, I guess if they did show up, how long it would take to fully fund it over, say, a, a two or a three-year period. I defer to Sandra on the time period, but that would be, uh, consistent modeling that's in council's, uh, discretion, yes?
Okay, because I'm, I'm going to raise to sort of summarize again, I'm, I'm, uh, I am growing concerned that, that we are continuing to add population. Um, and, and not really getting officers on the ground. And, uh, and, you know, I didn't think, reminding Mr. Backen, we were headed down. Uh, the road of potentially because of this, uh, some programs not continuing or being postponed until those additional officers arrived in order to make up. For the extra demands in other areas. Did I, did I hear that correctly at one point in some meeting?
Yeah, no, in, in part, that's correct. There's supply and demand issues in terms of the officers, and then there's as well the. The, um, the inspectors on the ground trying to allocate their staff as best they, they can. So for example, some of the. The, their, the homeless task force that they were operating, that's an internal RCMP, uh, grouping. Uh, isn't functioning because it's been redeployed to other areas, because they're trying to meet the immediate demands that they're seeing. Longer term, uh, where we've had some success is when we have a, the superintendent or chief superintendent, uh, overseeing things, they can. They can look at the bigger picture more easily, and it's not really fair for the inspectors to be caught in that position, because they're dealing with. Immediate concerns such as, uh, tractor parades or, uh, protests that we, as we saw over the weekend.
Yeah, so I, I'm just going to reiterate that I do, I do want to find a way to solve this. So maybe there's some way to have this in, in this, in a future motion or amendment. But put this in council's mind that, uh, this, this needs to be addressed, I think, at the. Don't want to see other programs getting, getting postponed or put on hold, such as that homeless outreach team, as I recall, is pretty important. As one and many example, programmings in the school district and so on. I want those programs to continue. And, and when we authorize funding, yeah, I want to see the officers deployed, or, or I want an explanation on how we're going to solve this. Because this just can't go on year after year. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Yeah, well, I wasn't going to talk about that, but I mean, it sounds to be like a bit of a shell game. If we, if we need the offices. Then we're going to have to budget for it. So there, you know, maybe we just could keep working on this number until we get it down to the point where, uh, where we can afford some more offices. But I had, uh, uh, more of a comment about the, uh, the grant, the five point four seven, which we called five point seven, the government grant. And, uh, when you look at the restart, uh, grant program on the internet, it talks specifically about what the uses is, uh. Use of it is, and that is, is most definitely to keep our recreation centers open. But it also talks about a, an emergency management. Grant from, uh, emergency management, uh, BC. Does staff have any knowledge about, uh, a grant? Available from that, funding from, uh, emergency management BC that might help us in this discussion with policing or other things?
Uh, there, there was funding through the emergency, uh, the, for the EOC from that grant process, but they began to, um. Restrict it significantly as the pandemic went on. So we did receive some, um, some. Some good, significant, not huge, but significant dollars from that. But that program seems to have wound down because they're now trying to operate in a, in a, well, in a post EOC environment. That's what they're trying to do. The provincial ELC is looking at this as a pandemic that municipalities and health authorities have to deal with, uh, not really as a, a, a. Provincial wide emergency.
Okay, well, I'm happy that we've got all three recreation centers open to some extent. Uh, and we were going to get upgrade, or updates, uh, quite regularly. So I'm wondering if staff can send us one, because. Uh, you know, when you use those numbers, uh, Mr. Backen, about, uh, you know, only nine percent capacity and so forth. Uh, I just want to make sure that we are actually having full capacity that we're allowed to have, because of course, there's been some rumors from. Uh, Aldego, for example, that there, there may be room for another ten people or something like that, and there isn't. Uh, that, that accommodation being made. I'm not trying to blame staff or anything, but certainly considering the numbers are so critical. Uh, we want to make sure that we do have the correct numbers, uh, and the correct, uh, you know. Uh, uh, protocols in place to allow as many people as we can to use the facility. So, can, you said, you referenced actually that we might be. Already have an update, so if we don't, maybe we can make sure that comes in. And, you know, to the early discussion, you know, which one of our facilities is, is doing better than the others, or are they all doing well? Uh, my understanding that, that all three are very, very popular and, um, and that we should be getting, you know, a high. Level of usage, but I want to make sure that we've got those right numbers. If we're only allowed forty people and we only have thirty-five, well, that's, you know. Considerable difference. And if we're allowed forty-four and we only have forty, that kind of a thing. So if we can get that information, I think it'd be helpful.
Your worship, the last update was, I think, emailed Friday, uh, but it was on the distribution list as of today, I think. It's from Mr. Stare. Uh, responding to, I think, some of the, uh, the numbers and usage rates. So, uh, good place to start. Um, the. The actual overall numbers, I think, are, you're quite correct, are strong through all the centers at this point, given the fact they've all opened, uh, different times. Uh, so I think our numbers are strong within the COVID limitations. Uh, I don't think, I'm going by memory, that there was any one that really stood out, but. We can monitor that going forward as we see what the, uh, the usage rates are going forward, as we may see some variability, once they've all been operating for a, a month or so.
Yep, and I think we should get some comparatives from other communities, because perhaps a lap time of an hour and a half is too much. Or it could be forty-five minutes. I'm not sure what the numbers are, but we could be possibly adjusting those times to make, uh, more users, uh, uh, able to. To use the facilities.
No, it's, it's a good comment. Our users are hearing other things, and when we do track them down, by and large, um. They're more based on rumor and innuendo than the actual facts that we're seeing. Our, our challenge is, we have, um, a lot of enthusiastic users, I would say that, that are, uh, I think, uh, trying to push the envelope somewhat. And we're trying to maintain what we interpret the public health orders to be. And as such, our numbers are. We have more facilities open than many around us, but again, they're limited openings because of the fact of the, limited to aquatics. I believe Surrey is still only at one, but I could be corrected on that. Uh, so it's, uh, it's an interesting thing, but the, the. Rumor mail is certainly, uh, more active than, uh, than the, uh, the facts.
Okay, well, thank you very much, Sean, Mr. Backen, and, uh, Mr. Ross, for your, uh. Presentation today and a bit of an overview. I know we have more work to do, and we're coming back with this, uh, council. So I don't see any further hands up, so I'm going to ask, uh, for motion. A motion by Council Whitmarsh, second by Council Arneson, all those in favor. And that's carried. Thank you very much for a good day's work. A lot, lot done, but more to be done. So thank you, have a good evening.